I guess we. Full strength.
Yes.
One one zone. We need to call out the attendance. But probably planning and zoning question, special eating order. Both this item is. Here. Two seven. Blue check here and we have my remote. It will pull up here. Have our local members. A whole business. We want to do. Yeah, we talked about who. Short term rentals first and then go to that is.
Right, I think that's on the agenda as well, so that is very completely discussion.
All right, so go. Our first topic is short term rentals. Sponsor policy discussion question. You get the ball, Jeff.
Uh, yes, I'll get the ball rolling. Um, I will say I'm having difficulty hearing you today. I don't know if it's just me or if there are others. Kelly, how are you able to do?
It's a bit crackly and hard to hear.
Okay.
And like a low volume as well, right?
Yeah. Uh. I'll do my best. And if you have any difficulty hearing me, please just let me know. So as you know, uh, for the audience at home, uh, Horsey Witten prepared a questionnaire for the Planning and Zoning Commission members regarding, uh, different aspects of potential zoning for short term rentals. Uh, we did receive as of this morning, six responses. Uh, so I did not have time to, um, thoroughly analyze them or put them into a PowerPoint presentation, but I did go through all six responses and compile them. I don't know if this would be helpful for you, but I am inclined to share my screen and just show, uh, what the compiled results were. I would like to, with your permission, go through those, uh, go through all of them, uh, at a high level and then, uh, go back and, uh, discuss each of the major issues. Uh, but before we discuss them, I'd just like you all to have a sense of where there's, uh, consistency and, uh, support for certain issues among you all and where there may be, uh, differences of opinion. Uh, does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Yes. Yeah, the differences will have to work out. Maybe we should just go through the common one or the ones we have a lot of support for. Then we can go through the others as time permits.
Right, uh. Am I sharing the correct screen? Can you all see policy questions for short term rentals?
Yes.
Okay.
I can see him, Jeff.
Excellent, excellent. All right. So the first question, we just went back to the basics, just to get everyone in writing confirmed. Do you believe that STR should be prohibited throughout the town or that they could be permitted, uh, in certain zoning districts with conditions? Uh, so it was unanimous. All six responses, uh, said you're comfortable permitting with conditions. I will note that one of you said, however, uh, if it's too complicated, uh, to find acceptable conditions or too burdensome for the town to enforce them consistently, uh, that person would support a ban altogether. Uh, so again, generally speaking, everyone on board with, uh, allowing these with conditions. The second question, should short term rentals be allowed in commercial and mixed use zoning districts? Uh, so we split this into commercial districts and mixed use districts based on your responses. Uh, so for commercial districts, it was unanimous. Uh, all six said, yes, we're comfortable allowing this in commercial districts. Um, some of you were comfortable with that end of story. Uh, most of you are comfortable with that with conditions. Um, and obviously so long as residential uses aren't allowed use in the underlying zoning district. Uh, for mixed use districts, most of you, five, uh, said you were comfortable allowing in mixed use districts. Um, again, so long as residential uses are allowed and, uh, conditions are followed. Uh, there was one person who said maybe, um, would still want conditions, uh, but said that was, there was concern that, uh, and otherwise all residential multifamily building. Uh, if you had short term rentals within that kind of context, that that may not be appropriate, even if it were in a mixed use district. Third question, should short term rentals be allowed in any zoning district so long as the property owner, uh, the property on which the STR is located is owner occupied? So back to this owner occupied issue, which again, uh, sort of on the fence as to whether we can deal with that through zoning or if we have to deal with that through, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, general ordinance. But with this question, four of you said, yes, you'd be comfortable allowing, uh, short term rentals, um, with that are their owner occupied. Uh, there were some caveats, um, that, uh, the commercial use, i.e. the short term rental, uh, should be clearly secondary to the residential use. Uh, we had to make sure that the owner is actually in residence for most of the year. And also that the property must be registered and regularly monitored, uh, and that there be no more than one short term rental per property. And, uh, that comment will go more towards, um, the last question about, uh, your suggestions to the, uh, town council for, uh, a general code of ordinances for, um, short term rentals. So again, not unanimous on this one. There were two of you who said, no, owner occupancy should not be a requirement for a short term rental. Uh, and to clarify, I think, um, for at least one of you, uh, that wasn't so much that you did not care about, uh, a short term rental being owner occupied, but more that owner occupancy was not an appropriate thing for the zoning ordinance to be, um, regulated. Uh, and again, we agree this may be something that has to be dealt with in the code of ordinances. Uh, question four, should all short term rentals require a special permit? Uh, so by and large consensus on this, uh, five of the six of you said, yes, they should require a special, uh, use permit. Uh, one of you said that, uh, you support this, but only in some zoning districts. However, did not clarify which zoning districts, uh, you thought, um, special permits would be required. So we can discuss that. Uh, one of the six of you did say that you disagreed and, uh, that a requirement for a special permit, um, for an STR, uh, would require development of a list of applicable, applicable criteria for evaluation and renewal after prescribed time limit. Uh, so we can go back and discuss that one. Question number five, should short term rentals be allowed in any residential zoning district? Uh, so again, this was an opportunity to say, no, I don't think these ever are appropriate within a residential zoning district, or if there are instances where, um, you think it would be appropriate. Uh, so did ask for a yes, no response to this question, but, uh, not a single person gave me a yes or no response. All kinds of caveats, which, you know, is understandable. Uh, so, yes, comfortable with residential zoning so long as there are conditions for safety, limiting the number of people parking and noise. Uh, yes, we're comfortable in residential areas, but density, uh, shouldn't be the precluding factor. Uh, in other words, um, didn't feel that the, you know, because your residential zones are based on density, residential density, that that should not be the factor that decides whether or not, uh, and, uh, short term rentals allowed. Uh, only accessory to an owner occupied residential dwelling. Uh, again, some folks were like that. That's your line. As long as it's, uh, owner occupied, uh, accessory to that, you're okay. Another person I have, uh, I have to ask a question about this, thought that short term rentals should be prohibited in the R seven through RU twenty, uh, except that the owner may rent an STR up to twice a year when the owner is absent. Uh, so this is sort of an outlier opinion and, uh, one that I think we'll, we'll have to discuss. Uh, not sure what the length of time for absence would be. Uh, and it was unclear from the response how the, how the person felt about, uh, short term rentals in the RU forty or the RU eighty. And then lastly, um, yes, with conditions or a special permit, uh, however, this person did not respond to the sub questions. Um, so it was uncertain if, uh, the person was comfortable with short term rentals anywhere in a residential zoning district, so long as they meet conditions, again, a special permit. Uh, that was unclear. So again, something we'll have to discuss. Uh, but under this, we had several sub questions. Uh, starting with, uh, today, as we know, the highest concentration of short term rentals, uh, tends to be in and around Mystic, uh, or those areas that are most popular with tourists and visitors. Uh, places where people can walk to restaurants and activities or elsewhere along the waterfront. Uh, so one of the things we discussed was whether short term rentals should be allowed in residential districts within walking distance of these centers. Um, so two of you said, yes, so long as there are conditions. Three, uh, said, no. Um, and again, one person did not respond to these sub questions at all, which is why you're only seeing five responses. Um, so again, the people who said, no, uh, that only accessory to an owner occupied residential dwelling. Uh, because these are exactly the areas where there are most, uh, conflicts with short term rental issues. So the person did not want to see more short term rentals near your village centers. And all, uh, another person said that proximity to an adjacent zoning district is not a realistic waiver to a requirement for a site. Uh, and again, that's something that I agree with, uh, you know, best practice is if the use is allowed in the district, it's allowed everywhere in the district. Uh, so some of the things that we're playing with are, uh, not exactly zoning best practices, sort of, uh, pushing the envelope if it were as you are. Uh, next sub question, um, some PCC members have noted that you would be more comfortable, uh, with short term rentals in your less dense residential districts or more rural areas, uh, away from the mixed use and commercial centers. Um, so only one person disagreed with this, four agreed, um, and said that, yes, rural location could be acceptable depending on their relationship to their neighbors, um, whether there's a buffer, whether there is, uh, uh, topographical, uh, difference, you know, uh, from one hill to another or just other ways that, uh, that, that use would be, um, buffered from its neighbors. Uh, and again, one person reiterated that they'd be comfortable with this as long as it was owner occupied and there was only one short term rental per property. Um, and then, uh, again, another person, it was unclear if they'd be comfortable with this in the R forty and the, I'm sorry, RU forty and RU eighty. Uh, then we asked specifically about our first draft, our little straw man, um, whether you would be comfortable allowing, uh, short term rentals in residential zoning districts on, um, our two roads, uh, within a half mile watch, uh, of mixed use or commercial districts. Um, this was probably the most unfavorable idea. Three people said, no. Uh, and again, one person said that, you know, frontage classification should not be, um, used for determining applicability of zoning regulation requirements. Uh, and again, I don't, I can't disagree with that. Uh, and then two were either partly okay or unsure. Um, so one person said, actually, they'd be comfortable with a half mile around Mystic, but as little as 1,000 feet around other commercial and mixed use areas. Um, but again, overall, uh, most people were not a fan of this concept. And then you were asked to share any other thoughts you may have on short term rentals in residential zoning districts. Uh, so we'll just read these very briefly. Residential districts should be used primarily for residential purposes. Home-based businesses are allowed, but the business owner is on site and the level of traffic and visitors or customers is very limited. So, and this was someone who, uh, only was comfortable with residential STRs if they were on a, uh, owner occupied property. Uh, not a matter of residential districts, but need to define houses in the residential neighborhood. Um, so whether houses have stable residents on each side or across the street, uh, a smaller lot, a house to the rear cannot be suitably, suitably isolated and therefore precluding factor. Uh, next, we just need precise language. Again, obvious, uh, the town lawyer and zoning official have been having difficulty enforcing, uh, that whatever we do, we need more precision. Operational requirements for short term rentals should be added to section 5.17 lodging for transient rentals. So a good idea and probably a good place for those to live. And finally, there is a distinction between someone who rents their home part-time and someone who buys a property exclusively to rent it out. Our regulations should be clear and that the former is what we are discussing in part with conditions. Uh, and later on, uh, we do discuss this issue of, um, uh, corporate owned short term rentals and, uh, um, a desire to prohibit those altogether. Question number six, uh, off-street parking standards. So, uh, Horsey Witten Group had initially recommended that, uh, requiring one off-street parking space for every short term rental bedroom. Uh, we'd also recommend that in residential zoning districts, all, uh, parking be accommodated on site. Uh, but that mixed use or commercial zoning districts, uh, can be located off-site within 1,000 feet. So, uh, all six of you agreed with this with caveats. Uh, so three of you said that all parking should be on site, um, that even in the mixed use and commercial zoning districts, um, that parking should be on site and not off-site. One person was comfortable with the off-site parking, uh, within a smaller radius, uh, so 500 feet instead of 1,000. Uh, and one person said that larger buildings should meet standards for hotels. Uh, was not clear to me how large, uh, also wanted to note that, um, in your current regulations, hotel parking standards account for staff, uh, which short term rentals don't have. Uh, so I don't know if I would necessarily propose having your hotel parking standards apply regardless of the size. Um, question number seven had to do with noise and nuisance provisions. We noted that the environmental performance standards of section 7.4 would apply, including no noise, odor, vibration and other disturbances. Uh, so again, all six of you were generally comfortable with that. There was some caveats. Uh, there are two of you who said, yeah, for now, but the nuisance standards aren't great and we need to revise them, um, give them more teeth, uh, be able to revoke a license if, for example, a certain violation, certain number of violations are, um, caught in a certain timeframe. Um, and then one person said, yes, these should apply with only for full-time short term rentals. Uh, and so I'm not sure how you would want to define a full-time short term rental. This may get back to the concept of occasionally allowing an owner occupant to rent out, uh, their properties to short term rental a couple of times a year. Uh, as a sub question to this, we asked whether the town's lighting standards, which currently do not apply to single and two-unit dwellings, should apply to short term rentals. And, uh, all six of you agreed that they should. However, again, there were some caveats. Uh, one person said that, uh, these should not necessarily apply to an owner occupied, um, STR accessory, uh, STR accessory to an owner occupied residential dwelling. Uh, one person said, went even farther and said, sure, but this wouldn't apply to, uh, only the STRs that are physically attached to a principal owner occupied residential dwelling. And, uh, one person said, yes, but again, only for full-time short term rentals. And I will have to determine, uh, what that, what that would mean to you. And then finally, uh, again, we noted that there are a number of issues, uh, that are clunky to regulate other zoning or just simply unable to be regulated via zoning effectively. Um, and so we want to see what issues you would like to advocate, uh, for a townwide ordinance. Uh, one of you did note that, uh, you're not convinced that an ordinance is necessary and, uh, therefore did not answer the, uh, sub questions under question number eight. Uh, so again, there were five of you who answered these sub questions. Uh, so should there be residency requirements for short term rental owners, uh, whether they have to be on site in town, uh, and should corporate or investment owners be prohibited? Uh, most, most of you three, uh, said, yes, and that this was, it was especially important to prohibit all corporate owners. Uh, one person said, yes and no. Uh, so yes, uh, when located in a residential district, then they need to be on site. Uh, but off-site owners or corporate owners could be okay in the commercial district. And, uh, one person said, no, ownership requirements, uh, would be difficult to enforce. Uh, next, that there should be registration requirements for all, for all short term rentals. Uh, five of you, all five who answered this said, yes, you agree there should be a registry and a mechanism for shutting down unregistered short term rentals. Um, and one person noted, again, we'd need an ordinance to enforce and identify what agencies maintain the registration list. Uh, and again, yes, I agree that would be something that would need to be figured out in your code of ordinances. Should there be a verified contact from someone that could be contacted 24 hours a day with questions or complaints and can, uh, be physically at the short term of the property within a reasonable amount of time. Again, all of you who responded said, yes, we should do this. Uh, but we should define reasonable. I think in the last draft of the ordinance, the reasonable time period was two hours. Next, should there be spacing requirements between short term rentals or in other words, a distance, uh, minimum distance required from one short term rental to another? Uh, only one of you, uh, was supportive of this idea, uh, two said, no. In fact, that one person said the best short term rental neighbor is another short term rental, uh, who didn't see the problem with, uh, having them next to each other. Two people said, maybe, um, and one of whom said, uh, requirement could be unfair to existing short term rentals if they can continue to operate. Uh, but again, generally speaking, not a great amount of support for that concept. Uh, caps on short term rentals, uh, so within a certain geographic area, either within the whole town, within a neighborhood zip code census tract. Um, should there be an absolute cap on the number of short term rentals within an area? Uh, two of you said, yes. Three of you said, no. Um, and the arguments for the noes is that whatever standards you create, um, you should be comfortable with the short term rental wherever it meets those criteria. And I would agree. Uh, and that requirements are identified by the assigned zone for a site. Um, so again, split on that one, but more of you against having a cap. Occupancy limits. Um, so again, while the, we know the, uh, draft that the town council was considering did not pass. Uh, that draft did include a limit of two people per bedroom, excluding children. Uh, and we asked if you would consider an absolute cap on the number of adults. Four of the five you who responded said, yes, there should be a cap. Uh, someone recommended 12 adults, someone, uh, suggested 10. Um, but, uh, one person wanted to define bedroom, um, to make sure that people aren't being stuffed into rooms that aren't meant to be bedrooms. Uh, and also that, uh, of course, uh, however many people are ultimately allowed also depends on, uh, there being enough parking on site for each bedroom. Uh, again, one person said no to this, uh, and said the requirement is impossible for zoning enforcement. Uh, and again, I agree. I just want to remind everyone that this list of questions would be about the code of ordinances and not about zoning. Uh, visitor limits, uh, should the short term ordinance explicitly prohibit parties or non-guests? Uh, you are again split on this. Two of you said, yes. One said, maybe, uh, and two said, no. Um, the reasons why, once a guest should be okay. And parties may be okay depending on relationship to neighbors, either distance or if the neighbors say, we're fine with you having a party in the backyard. Um, another person said, party should require an ASP invoked by a zoning regulation, a small number of guests should be permitted. And then finally, um, should there be proof of code compliance, fire safety measures, adequate water and sewer service, or other utility and infrastructure that may be of concern? Uh, so all five of you said, yes. Um, one said that, uh, you should comply with all codes required of a business or hotel, including fire sprinklers. Um, another said that short term rental should require a zoning permit to operate, which requires verification of these requirements. Um, that was everything. So thank you for bearing with me. Uh, again, sorry, this was not in the PowerPoint presentation, but, uh, again, didn't have a whole lot of time this morning to pull stuff together. Uh, but yes, if you, if you would like, um, if it makes sense, we can go through the areas where there was disagreement and, uh, try to talk through those points. Does that make sense?
Oh, I would think that's a logical thing. Maybe you take the ones that have like different viewpoints. Try to, yeah, get some consensus.
Excellent. Let's do that. Uh, so again, there was general consensus on, um, the first couple, yes, we're going to allow with conditions. Yes, we're generally comfortable in commercial and mixed use districts. Uh, we can have a conversation about. Actually, let's pause and have a quick conversation about residential only buildings or residential multifamily building in a mixed use district. Um, it was just one of you that brought up this concern, but, uh, how do other people feel? Uh, I might, I'll just throw in my professional opinion, particularly for a multifamily building, if we're talking about a condo or, uh, professionally managed rental property, uh, there's going to be a condo board. Um, there's going to be property management. And I'm inclined to let, um, a condo board or a property manager make those decisions themselves. Uh, if a condo board says, yeah, we're okay with, I, a number of condo boards, I know, will do this. They'll say, we'll let 10% of units, uh, be rental of any kind, um, and you have to apply and it's an internal decision. Uh, so my, my recommendation would be let's, let the management company or condo association handle that, um, but did want to open that up for discussion.
I was the one who said that, the one, maybe. So I would just, uh, may I explain?
Of course.
Yeah, so, well, so the only, I mean, I had had a conversation with a family, friends of mine who live in the powerhouse uh, property right on the river, very high-end condominiums, and they are having some pretty serious issues in that building right now. And as you just said, Jeff, they are dealing with the condo association, uh, to try to resolve it, but I think that it, you know, I think that when people buy multimillion dollar condominiums, they're not expecting drunken fights in the hallway. And so that's why I, so that was on my mind when I said that. And I think that still, but that's what I was trying to, if there can be a distinction between those two, that's what I was trying to make.
I, I would think that. The condo. Yeah. Do it dress well. It's a condo.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I, yeah.
So they've got a sound bylaws or something.
And they have an association, they were going to have a meeting. I don't know what the results of that were, but that was where I was coming from when I said that. I was just trying to imagine, you know, if you're an apartment building, you might not have that kind of protection.
Well, that's different. I think an apartment building is different than.
Apartment building too, because they don't have a manager desperate to keep his places rented. And if it starts to go downhill because people are, it's getting bad in the hallways, then they can enforce it. They can, yeah, like, so I think that's self. No, in fact, it's, it's stricter.
Those. Yeah, I think they can, they can do anything they want.
Okay, all right. I mean, I, I, so I'm, I'm, that's why I'm maybe, you know, I just wanted to throw it out there and have that considered. So I'm closer to maybe, yes.
Okay. All right, let us move on. Um, this is the first one that was, uh, there was a bit of disagreement about should short term rentals be allowed in any zoning district so long as the property on which the short term rentals located is owner occupied? Uh, so again, most of you are generally comfortable with that concept. There were a couple of you who are not. Uh, so let us discuss, uh, and let's start with, uh, those who are, um, who said, no. Uh, what, what is your argument for, for no?
I, I was, no, no people. I, I thought that, and as if you're allowing or not allowing an STR, it should be universal in the area. I, I did not see a problem with how some of these, uh, originally started, I think, were just for when the owner would be away on vacation or maybe traveling for work, that you could have, he could rent or he should, could rent them out as an STR. Uh, a few times during the year. But otherwise, it's a short term rental, whether it's owner occupied or not. I don't see. But otherwise, it's a short term rental, whether it's owner occupied or not, I don't see what the distinction is. So, transients, again, it's a business. Unless you want to treat it. As we treat other businesses in residential areas. Have some restrictions on.
It's answer, I'm not quite sure. Now, is owner occupancy should not be requirement for an STR? This question doesn't say it's required, but. This question just says, can you do it?
Yeah.
The other way around, it's a requirement.
Well, I, I think some, some of the people that were talking about STRs. Said they were subletting certain section of the building, oh, they would be there all the time. They might be running out for those. And that's a distinction of whether you're renting the whole property or just part of.
That's a valid point, I don't think this question addresses that too well.
Well, that's how I read.
One is, can you just vacate your property for. 29 days?
Yeah.
And let it out to somebody, which is not the way to do it.
Right.
And there now, now I'm not in residence, and there's other people living there. And therefore, it's allowed in any zoning district, and we have other caveats in there, so that doesn't necessarily make it allowed. Makes it. We still have other conditions too, they might not meet those conditions. Oh, that's, the other one is, if they stay in residence, in any zone, is it okay? And the answer is, maybe that's the result of the conditions, so. I think it's confused in my question and the answer, I'm quite sure. I think for me, it was the owner and residency, we can't regulate who owns the property, but how the owner uses the property. What, you know, I understand, and so when I think owner occupied. Then I was sort of confused as to whether or not, like, is the owner? Like, in the building when the tenant is in there, or is it? Is that what people were thinking, or were they thinking it's just like, yeah, it's occupied by the owner? Most of the time, you know what I mean, so that, I think maybe if the question were reworded, Jeff, you might get different responses. But I had trouble with owner occupied, that part kind of like confused me.
All right, well, let's, let's split this up and have this conversation.
Just a second, I just wanted to say that because I'm, I'm the second no. This is confession time. My problem with the question was different, because. When I was looking at zoning regs, which I spent some time on a few months ago, to me, and I, I still don't understand. Why we're not using this more, but if you look at the definition of bed and breakfast, and if you look at how we laid out the uses and everything. By various zones, I don't know why there aren't more parallels. In fact, I don't know why short term rentals is anything different really than bed and breakfast, but I don't have to go over that right now. Because my problem with this question was, is that should the STR be allowed in these only districts? Well, that's what bed and breakfasts are not allowed in industrial districts or green districts, right? Because when you're saying it's allowed in districts. Four districts, of course you can. To, oh, I would not say no to that, I think owner occupancy should be a requirement. So that should really be one person maybe on that, and not the other number of five.
I'm sorry, I did not, you were breaking up on me, Sue, I could not understand a word you just said, I apologize.
If you look at zoning regulations under bed and breakfast, my problem with the question was. You asked, should STRs be allowed in any zoning district, blah, blah, blah. Well, zoning districts include industrial and green districts, right? So technically, I think the question was, has to be adjusted or.
Fair enough.
Okay, so I was just looking at a zoning text point of view, so that's why I said, no. But I didn't say no, that I meant owner occupancy should not be a requirement, because I think in fact it should. So, I think that's, it's an important correction, maybe you wanted to say yes, except for green and. And well, if I could say one more thing too, which I didn't want to get into the last question, but. The other district where bed and breakfast, so some of the short term rentals about the same. Is not allowed, is in the working waterfront, WW, right?
Residence isn't allowed.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's another one that shouldn't, you know, before it was questioned. Getting technical on everybody here. But, and the other, of course, or you could have a bed and breakfast is quite interesting, I was once just. But, CNCR, even breakfast is permitted, right? The rest are more either, the small. It to me, I know what. Say this, that'd be defensive, because I worked through some regulations, but I think it is a certain logic, I think we ought to consider it.
Yeah, it's levels.
Yeah, that's right.
I continue to have very serious trouble understanding, it's very, very, very shaky with the microphone.
Maybe just put it in front of you.
So, this is Kevin, Sue, if you can maybe put that in writing, because it seems a little more precise. Than what the question was asked, you know. I think it'd be appropriate.
Yeah, and for all of you, some of you said, yes, no, and others, you know. Wrote out paragraphs if you had specific thoughts or were uncertain of how to interpret a question. And I highly encourage all of you to do that, because that is very helpful.
Okay, Jeff, can you hear me now, is that any better?
That is much better, yes.
This is cell phone.
For the third time. Okay, this is a nutshell. The reason I, I said no to the question is because there are industrial districts.
Right, industrial districts, green districts, the water, working waterfront, yeah, got that part.
Right, which in fact, if you, if you look at bed and breakfast for, you know, what is allowed in which district, right? I think it should very much parallel, it should not be the same. Those are, it's not allowed there, so that's why I said, no. Because I couldn't include those districts, however, where you said. You took my no as a no on the number that owner occupancy should not be a requirement for an STR. I don't agree with that, I think it should be a requirement. So, if you could just make that adjustment, that we agreed. Did you hear me, okay?
I think so.
Yeah, we heard that time too.
Great, we'll pass this around, have you speak.
So Jeff, could I ask a question here?
Of course.
I don't know if it was on three or four, at some point, and it's my words, probably wasn't articulated as far as your words. You see, you said, we seem to be pushing some common planning and zoning practices. Was it, was that on three or question four?
It's, so it's right, what, I think what you're referring to. Because this whole concept of. Where short term rentals might be appropriate in a residential district. Whether it be based on its frontage on arterial street, its distance from a different zoning district. Et cetera, et cetera. That is not standard zoning practice, generally, the best. Practices to, if you, if you have a standard for a use, it is consistent throughout an entire zoning district. And so the things that we're playing with and the things that we're struggling with. And this has been, you know, our back and forth since the get go, are generally better dealt with. As a, in a code of ordinances, as a permit for an activity, as opposed to a use. Because the short term rental really does end up being rather amorphous between a use and an activity, depending on the context. So I just meant to say that some of the solutions that we're exploring. Go against, I think Jeff has the same concern. Go against standard zoning practice of keeping consistency throughout the zone.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so let's go back to just the concept of owner occupancy. Generally, so let's talk about owner occupancy in the context of residential zoning districts strictly. I want to get your feedback on that. My guess, sense of how many people feel if. There is, and, and let's talk about this in the two different ways you've described, where you've got. A unit that is accessory to the principal dwelling unit, and the owner occupant is onsite versus. And this is the issue that Jeff brought up initially. You are the owner occupant, maybe you have an accessory unit, maybe you don't, but you occasionally rent your house out when you're not there. So let's start with number one, and why see how, see how people feel about that, again, in residential zoning districts. As, as a first, probably are, how, I want to, are people comfortable with that? If allowing them in residential zoning districts so long as the owner occupant is there. And you've got a unit that's accessory to the principal dwelling.
Well, if we. Allow the STR in, under those conditions. Shouldn't we be treating it like we do any other business in a residential? Area.
Theoretically, but what do you mean by that, please elaborate?
Well, I mean, we have a set of restrictions, trying to keep that, keep the. The minimum profit. With business activity. You know, all sorts of things. You know, try it like that, somebody running a business in a residential area.
So I'm losing you again, but I think what I heard is, should we treat them the same as other businesses that are allowed in residential areas? So for example, would they be subject to? The condition, the conditional uses for non residential uses in the RU districts, for example. Would they be subject to, again, the, the noise and environmental performance standards of 7.4, which otherwise would not. Residential use would not be subject to, so yes, and I think throughout this, we have tried to point out where. Those existing regulations would apply to short term rentals, whereas they would not otherwise apply to. The house or the residential use without the short term rental.
Hi, it's Sue, well, one thing I find interesting is the definition that we came up with for the bed and breakfast. And it's an owner occupied residential facility that is managed by the property owner. And provides transient lodging to the general public without in room cooking facilities. So I think, and that doesn't, that, that is just the general definition. And it is a business, but. And then as you get into each zone, of course, there's various requirements as to special permits or other things, depending on which zone it is. For example, the residential RS and R would be SP, special permit slash conditional. And most of the rest are conditional, or it's permitted in the course of CN or CR, but. But it's not really, it's not making a distinction between residential and commercial.
No, it really doesn't. And I don't know that that's a distinction we need to get super hung up on. To answer your earlier question, Sue, the major difference between the B and B versus a short term rental is that issue of. A kitchen, right, the. B and B is generally a room within a house, within a structure or a group of structures, whereas. The rented unit in a short term rental is oftentimes a standalone dwelling unit. Or I mean, I don't mean the detached dwelling unit, but you know, its own dwelling with a. Place to sleep and a kitchen and a bathroom and so on and so forth. So that's from a definition perspective, that's, that's the major difference.
And the kitchen I thought was interesting, or the breakfast idea, I looked at the definition of Airbnb. And it meant air mattress bed and breakfast, and I was like.
All right, so back to the initial question, I just want to make sure I understand how people feel about. Allowing short term rentals in residential zoning districts if. It's part of, it's accessory to an owner occupied dwelling. Whoever is speaking, I, I completely cannot hear you.
You're breaking up.
Can you hear me now, Jeff?
Yes, loud and clear.
Oh, I was too close, maybe it's too close. If we look at a district like R seven, should we allow any type of STRs? Might be a good question to answer, because there you're in a very dense area. And they probably have the most adverse impact on real residents. Other than transients. You know, which might make the big, make a big difference on how you treat. These.
Also, in R seven, you know, accessory dwelling units are allowing, you can, so that density doesn't come into play, it doesn't. No consideration given to that, you can have one accessory dwelling.
No, but, no, I just wonder whether that should be a restriction, just because you don't want transients. In that accessory dwelling unit, it should be a full time or greater than 30 days use. Accessories. Yeah, accessory is supposed to be still a resident. To me, there's a, a big distinction between transient use and residential use. And we're arbitrarily saying that that definition is a 30 day stay. I think is, is how I would interpret what we're doing.
That matches our language.
Because it goes along with other, yes.
I would agree.
Lessons.
Jeff, your proposal would be to prohibit short term rentals across the board. If I understood your comments correctly, in the RU 20 zone or.
No, R, R seven and R 12.
Just R seven and R 12, okay. So I think in your comments.
And my comment also went up to the 20 size, but I'd be willing to compromise on that.
Okay.
First, you realize that, that's, R seven is where a bunch of them are. I know.
But that's.
That's, that's where the biggest number of complaints comes.
I think that's a, I would agree, that's a good idea, I think. Or the other.
Yeah, or impose, you know, make those the special permit. So we can hear from neighbors, we can hear from.
That's what I think, so I think that might be the best place to have them with, with a special permit and with the conditions.
And heavy, heavy conditions.
And if we go to special permits, having a time limit where they expires, you have to renew it every year or two years.
How many complaints have we heard?
We used to always do that.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Special permit, come in, how many complaints have you had? Okay, you can keep going.
Yeah, that was interesting, because from the planning side of this process, we weren't. Already to that, so you're more aware of that, so that makes me more comfortable.
I go along with you.
Where, where are we going on with?
That if we were to approve. SDRs in these smaller zones. Then they would be potentially with a special permit requirement.
Actually, I thought we had just as a blanket said there, but there's always a special permit. It's not the fact that it's dense that might be a good thing. It raises that the conditions that that much more important, well, they're always important.
Right, let's, let's, let's talk about this because they do go hand in hand. My interpretation as well had been that you wanted. Special permit. I think there was only, I think it was only Sue who said that you were comfortable with special permits, but only in certain zones. Everyone else said you wanted to see. Special permits across the board. So let's talk about that a little bit. Do you think it would be? Helpful to have special permits across the board, or should we focus the special permits on the areas where there's likely to be more? Options for conflict and therefore a greater need for. Scrutiny and I think as Jeff suggested. Coming back annually.
How many SDRs exist right now? I mean, could we even handle special permits across the board? I don't think we could. Yeah, so we couldn't, I don't think we could handle that.
Well, we could if there's a fee associated with it, we'd pay for it. If it costs money for the town to have SDRs. The towns do something for that supply. Like anything else, we cost the town money.
I think he means us.
No, but I don't think, yeah, special permit, we have to approve a special permit. With a public hearing and all that stuff.
There'll be as many complaints. Where there won't be any complaints.
Well, we could exclude the CN and CR. If you wanted to. And then just do only residents.
Or some of these rural areas where you have. One acre. Or two acre lots, I don't think the SDR is gonna be bothersome at all. And why I wouldn't want it.
The only caveat to that, I kind of agree, I was all favorite, like who cares? Until the house is actually in one corner of the lot. Right next to someone their neighbor. We're picturing a house in the middle of the acres, it's not necessarily the way it works. So I I think it's harmless that we still have a special permit in there. See how they're arguing what's going on, did these people just do a. Party central next to people who care.
Well, well, that's. That's maybe rooms, how many rooms are involved, you wanna keep it small?
So I think you still need. But to Susan's point about the commercial district. I really don't think we care. As you can put a hotel there. And that would be okay too. It's just a kind of hotel.
It's a hotel with a lobby.
Alright, so I am hearing. The general consensus seems to be. We're cool with owner occupied, owner occupied. SDRs. Where the owner is onsite. And yes, require a special permit. For all with the exception of the CN and the CR. I know there's still some general concern about your capacity to. Manage the. Number of special permits that that might entail. But is that the general consensus for now? Alright, so let's talk. The other. Owner occupied scenario where you've got a property owner. Maybe they have. An accessory unit, maybe it's just the one house, but they leave town. And a couple of times a year rent out. Their house for less than thirty days. Is that's. Well, first of all, I would say that that situation is super squirrely to. Manage via zoning and I would not recommend you do. But. How do you feel about that situation?
Unenforceable, it would seem like.
So either have it full time or. Not at all.
Yeah, I would say we'd be silent on that point. But certainly not explicitly. Allow it.
What do you mean silent?
That's okay, yes, I'm somebody who has an extra house and I take off for thirty days. And I take off for another thirty days, then I take up a million thirty. Seven months out of the year. Or five point nine months out of the year. We're saying.
I think so, that that is somebody else's problem, that is not your problem. And I think that is, that is the town council's problem to figure out via a different. Venue, I think what you should do. Is focus on again, your land uses, and so in the definition of. Short term rental, we're saying we're only going to give. A short term rental permit. If you have. A house onsite that is occupied by the owner occupant. And the. Short term rental is accessory to. That's. Period, and we say, you know, the owner's gotta be around.
Make sure it's conveyed to the council that this is a, that we can't address, that should be.
Yes. And that's the point of question eight, that we will hopefully be developing this list of. These are the holes, it is, there's the things that we're concerned about, that the community is concerned about. Things that we've heard from the community that. Either can't be addressed by zoning or zoning is a very, very clunky tool. To address it in a way that would be really effective. And so, yes, I I think the hope is that this body can. Convey to town council, here's what, here's where we think you need to step up.
Well, that's what we sort of, I think, were on the path. Developing what we consider our rules for short term rentals and then we'll sit down with the council. To go over all we implement. Those that are can't be done in the zoning.
Just want to make sure somebody's tracking that. It sounds like it is.
Yeah, and we, we had a meeting. With the town manager and and the mayor. Couple of weeks ago. To discuss how we're gonna do this. Council is gonna hold off. On their action until we're done. We'll set something up. For communication.
I'm hoping that by that time, we don't have much to discuss between ourselves.
Right, so we want to come up with a plan first, right? Rather than. They're going off and writing something and. We have a completely different.
So I think we're good on this topic and given we have a half an hour left, I do want to. Move on to the next point of contention. As we covered the special permit issue. Whoever's talking, you're cutting up again, try backing away from that mic. Or whatever works.
Is there any way to get data on the existing SDRs to find out how many of them are owner occupied?
How many short term rentals there are in town? We're in discussion with a company that actually does that sort of thing and they. They don't just look at all listings, they, they.
Yeah, in SDR organization.
Again, I don't know whether or not we have data on owner occupied short term rentals, maybe have data on short term rentals.
Okay, but they may be able to.
I, you know, just knowing what Mystic looks like, I don't know if we're eliminating three quarters of the things by saying it's gotta be owner occupied. So what, what I know air DNA does have, I don't know if they'll be able to tell you point blank, yes, it's owner occupied. But they can tell you the type of unit, so if it's. You know. An accessory. Unit detached in the backyard, if it's over the garage, if it's part of the house, you know, if it's a room within the house. So there are types. Of short term rentals that. Are more often than not. Part of an owner occupied situations, you, we may not be able to get a precise number, but we can get. A decent estimate based on their. Tracking of types of short term rentals.
Okay, yeah, we can try to get that, that I think that'd be helpful for everybody.
Alright. So conditions within residential districts. So this was. A bit of. Contention, although I think we're. I think we're drawing close to this, so if. The only. Criteria, the only allowable way that you would accept. A short term rental in a residential zoning district is owner occupied, period. Then this. Sort of ends our conversation. But. Yeah, that seems to like, if, if, if you are comfortable with that as our baseline. Then it makes this question sort of moot, which is, which is good from a neatness perspective. Let's see if there are any of those others that we should be diving into.
Are you talking about question eight?
I'm talking about question five now. So five is within the standards within the residential. Zoning districts. So we had talked about. This issue of do we allow them within a certain radius of your mixed use areas and. The consensus that I'm hearing is no, we shouldn't be basing it on that. You should just. Allow it if it's owner occupied. And it goes through the special permit process, so you get to have the hearing, you get to. Iron out any problems through. That process, but you're not gonna like put a boundary. Around Mystic, for example, and say we're only gonna allow it within a half mile of this area. So I mean, it seems like based on the conversation that we've had. That sort of tactic is. Off the table and then likewise for. The rural areas, maybe you're more comfortable having them in the rural areas, but you still want to have that special use, a special permit process. For reviewing. And then this one, we're throwing out the window altogether. So it sounds like. From that perspective, we can redraft this with the assumption that in the residential zoning districts, you are only allowing. Short term rentals. In an owner occupied. Situation with a special permit. Period. So to the parking issue. It sounds like, again, the consensus is, and I just want to confirm this. One parking space for every bedroom. But the consensus seems to be all parking needs to be able to be accommodated onsite. Is there anyone who disagrees with that?
I'm gonna disagree with that.
Okay.
If it gets downtown Mystic. I don't think I want people to plow under their entire front lawns. Within. All to our cars. You know, otherwise it would be okay. They could find. Some other lots next door around the corner, five hundred feet at one block. Kind of why I don't want to suggest to the five hundred feet where it's very dense. Don't think it should be farther because then people won't use it, will do something else. In a block someplace, then I think they might.
Would it be like the Mystic Art Museum parking, or you'd have to have an arrangement? I mean, it really should be, or else you're just loading up downtown Mystic.
Absolutely not, that could be some dedicated spot. That you'd have to find, they have five hundred feet to find it.
I see it as, this is somebody's house. I mean, the number of people that live in that house should not be exceeded by the people that are transient living in this house. So there should be enough parking or at least accessible areas to put your car. As well as the owners.
Or for residents, I mean, I'm thinking. Just in my neighborhood. We didn't have a special thing saying, please don't park overnight, when the kids come home from college, they have to park on the street overnight. But. The number of cars that you actually have in a modern day house with five bedrooms could be a heck of a lot of cars. And we're okay with it if you live there, parking on the street because. That's the way it goes, what we're saying is, we're not okay with every one of those residents, we're short term rental, they're a business. Get them off the street for that to, don't get the same rights as full time residents. Get them on the street, but do they need to be in the driveway? Well, I think somebody's driveway, I don't know if they need to be.
I don't think we want these things making our parking situation downtown Mystic worse.
I absolutely don't think they should.
That's what this is.
And and so I don't think it should be a validation program, I think that's off the record, they have to create some new parking space, create parking spaces. Off street. I think they might be able to do, I own two properties, I can put an extra couple of parking spaces on one property, one property I live in. It's still connected to it before some other arrangement, I could come up with something. Next parking spaces, we're asking, we're going to ask businesses to do that. Say you must create a space. Not validation, create a space someplace and somehow whether it's going to be absolutely forever connected, your business. Off street, or is it, I don't know, it's around the corner someplace.
Then houses pave their front lawns and then they can sell off these. I think that could be a nightmare in the way it makes downtown Mystic.
I I think that's what could happen, we say everybody's gotta be onsite.
No, no, it's our offside, why wouldn't their neighbor pay their front yard too? And then they get twenty five dollars a month.
Right, remember, you've already got very strict standards about where people can have parking, where it is on their property, how much impervious surface there is. So that doesn't change. It really is just a game of where there is space that fits within your existing regulations. You know, as your, as your consultant, I I agree with. I agree that. You know, this, this. A- a- allowing people to. Make deals with their neighbors to find dead cave parking spot. Should hopefully discourage. More paving on. Individual lots. But again, you are, you are restricted, again, the historic district and all your underlying zoning regulations as to. How that ends up looking, so it's not as though this is going to. Make things. Any better or worse than your regulations already allow for parking, right?
You have a limit to the number of spaces or the number of people or some other way to.
That's, I wonder whether we have to address the size. Of the bed, how many bedrooms are. Cause how many people are gonna be using, you know, if you show up with a family, right?
One house down there needs ten parking spaces and then your neighbors are paving eight.
Well, that, yeah, but I think that may be something that has to be addressed. We're allowing SDRs in these districts.
It's up to just a number of parking spaces because it's a little lot with a little house. They want a few parking spaces, you can't say everybody gets ten.
But some of these, some of these places can be huge.
Correct, they have to relate.
And maybe you just wanna say you can't have an SDR.
Or it's very, or it's operating. Or, or it's very, or it's operated in a small way, less impactful.
Again, that's why we also talked about, should there be a maximum cap on how many people you're, how many adults you're allowing in any of these, regardless of the number of bedrooms. Maybe you've got seven bedrooms, but you can't have more than ten adults um, or eight adults, or whatever the number is.
One of the criteria for a special permit.
Right.
Might be how.
How many people can you effectively park?
No, I mean, yeah, but you may just, you don't want to have that many people.
No, that's right.
Transients grouped together.
Oh, you're not solving the problem.
Yeah.
Heard about.
They can look in at the spicy.
My turn.
Mention. We don't.
The thing too is that if you come with a family, it could be, you know, three kids and parents or whatever, and then you only need one car.
Yeah.
Or it could be, you know, five, you need five cars, you know, five people show up, right?
Well, and also two, two, two issues there, right? Like, there's only, if you say you have to accommodate parking on site, there is an actual limit to how many cars you can park on site and still meet your uh, impervious service standards and uh, you know, parking placement standards. So that puts an actual cap on how many people can show up. Uh, and also the uh, short term rental owner is going to advertise, this is how many spots are available. I mean, I have done this, I have experience with this where maybe there's a big house, but there are only two spots available. So, sorry folks, there are two spots. If there, you want five different people to show up, or five different households, they're gonna have to carpool, right? Or you have to figure out some other way to get there.
Black Island, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, in this case, we wouldn't be saying, sorry folks, you have to find someplace else to park. We're saying, sorry folks, rent some other house.
Yeah. Yeah. If that's a deal breaker for you, then you don't rent that house.
Well, that's one of the criteria that we have.
Maybe so, they're, they're, it's sort of self limited in terms of the size. When you do the calculations here, it's a much impervious service.
They have.
As I can, I can only fit four cars, but therefore you can hold that full bedroom.
Exactly.
Bedroom and it just can help maybe us kids. Took care of it all.
Maybe all parking has to be on site.
Yeah.
Which I think was a majority consensus.
With that in mind, I suppose.
All right. Well, for now, it sounds like all on sites is the consensus.
And meets our present regulations.
Of course.
Yeah.
All right. So noise and nuisance, we're gonna put a pin in um, I can't disagree later. You may, you may want to revisit your nuisance standards in seven point four, but at the very least, we all agree they should apply to short term rentals, even if they are uh, in single or two family residential homes. And same for lighting. I would agree with some of these caveats. At the very least, if you've got an S T R that's physically part of the existing home, I don't know that you necessarily need them to apply uh, the town's light standards, but anything that's detached or standalone, I think that makes sense. Do people feel generally comfortable with that caveat?
I do, yeah. I guess it's that distinction of when, and I don't even know when it happens, when something goes to being a full operating business as opposed to something that's just a once in a while kind of thing, then it changes for me anyway.
And that's where again zoning gets really clunky and that's the primary example of where you see short term rentals fluctuating between a use and an activity. Right? So like there are a lot, like if you look at the Airbnb statistics and you'll see this, uh, if the town pays for this. You know, there are hundreds of registered Airbnbs, but a lot of them will rent out once a year, twice a year, you know, a handful of times within the season. And are either owner occupied the rest of the time or um, you know, or owner occupy, you rented out during the season or during the school year and then Airbnb'd over the summer. So there it's really difficult to say, all right, well, where does it, like, if the owner ever lives there during the year, does that mean it's not full time? Yeah, it's very, very difficult to, to draw that line in zoning and almost impossible to regulate. Uh, so.
Enforceable, right?
Yeah, enforceable.
I don't think so. I think if the owner doesn't live there, it's a business.
That's, yeah, I thought we were saying that it has to be owner occupied. So, but.
He was saying.
No.
We said if the owner never lives there, it's, you know, it's very.
And it's a pure business.
Yep.
That's, then that's not allowed in a residential area as well. But on the, some of these requirements for businesses in the seven four, should that apply to accept, to any accessory buildings where the owner isn't living in that particular line?
I don't, I don't think.
And so I was thinking of the lighting standards. If I have it, if I'm an S T R, so I've got people going all the way around. I'm going to put up fantastic clean lights on the outside parking four months out of years, which if it was commercial, would be permitted. If it was residential, would be required. I'd have security lights and motion detected.
Yeah.
But I think there might be some standards like, like lighting that would say, no, that makes it a little tough. Not nearly impossible to do.
It's a great idea, especially not that lights and shining up.
You don't want big lights.
For the, well, for birds and also.
People go a little crazy when they're just renting out their own house and wants to now have it secure or safe or what. The standards are there to protect us from them.
Yeah, I think you.
I don't think this, yeah, normal residents. On a very.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So my hearing for reversal um, that uh, people would generally not want to see the commercial lighting standards within the residential districts.
No. Doesn't it, doesn't that require lighting, parking continuously, certain movements?
Thought it was just that.
I don't think it requires.
It doesn't require, well, I say that, is it, there's standards, I don't know if it requires standards, but it's not much at all.
Yeah, commercial lighting is required and there's more than ten parking stalls required and you have to have a light on the lot, right?
Well, that's a part of it.
That's the commercial standards.
Well, we shouldn't have residential.
Shouldn't have the. Develop separate lighting standards for this particular.
That necessary is because mark plus our standards are all cut off, which by the way, you have to have some discussions of what's going on in Mystic right now, but we'll come. At my house, which looks like everybody else's house, they're all full cutoff because it just shows which LEDs to put in. Need to make full cutoff. It looked perfectly residential, just a little glow coming out, but, and it works just fine. So this is not a tough thing to do. At all. It's, it's selecting which light bulbs you put in or aiming them down correctly.
All right.
Not controversial.
All right. So we're, we're good requiring these. All right. So eight, we've got about ten minutes left. So I want to take a pause. Um, so the last set of questions is basically what you want to uh, bring forward to town council, uh, that maybe we can't really cover in zoning or can't cover in zoning well. We can have that conversation now, or if you want to have an initial conversation on uh, the first draft of data centers and just give me your general uh, thoughts and guidance on that. We could go that direction. How would you like to use the last ten minutes?
I don't, I don't think we're in a position to come up with what we want to present to the, to the town council until we have something in writing, we can look at that.
So. There are these specific issues um, that we had brought up. And again, I think by and large you were with pretty good consensus with the exception of, well, we've dealt with the residency requirement. I think there's general consensus that you do not want to allow corporate ownership. Although there was one outlier who said you'd be comfortable with corporate ownership in the commercial districts because it's no different than a hotel. So why wouldn't you? Uh, which does seem reasonable to me.
I agree. That wasn't my comment, but I agree with that. And over a hotel starts, one of these begins, if it's in the commercial district.
Right, then who cares? Everything else, there was, let's see, you know, the spacing requirements was basically a no. The caps on S T Rs. Generally a no. Occupancy limits generally yes, and we talked about that earlier. We'll probably have to come to some consensus about visitor limits. There was a private disagreement about that one. So are there any of those things you think would be valuable to discuss as a group uh, this evening?
Just about the, the length of total time that is devoted to an S T R during the year.
Uh, give me some more context to your question, Steve.
Well, could someone rent for three hundred and sixty-four days a year? As an S T R.
Why?
Yeah, it's fine.
Even the fifth day.
Well, you know.
You gotta have one day off for maintenance.
So, you know, again, going back to what the IRS thinks, you know, if you live there six months, you're a resident. And, you know, I would think that we want to mirror that and say, you can't be called an S T R if you're renting more than six months.
Yeah.
Because then the resident is in there for a situation.
No, we're saying, well, in the residential districts, we're saying, the owner has to be there during the rental.
Right.
Is it, we're saying. So.
We're, we're not addressing.
So it would only be in the commercial.
Yeah, so we.
Districts.
So I think that, yeah, I think.
So I don't think we care.
But I agree with your concern. But does that need to be in the ordinance someplace?
I think that's where the, this, like what we, when I initially thought an S T R was and what it has evolved into fifteen years later. It's like, and I was, as I was answering these questions, I kept like, oh yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of that again. And I had to go back and sort of like readjust my answer, my responses, but.
Because originally it was, they are just to rent when the owner was on vacation or work assignment or something like that. Now it's become a three hundred and sixty-five day a year. Resident, uh, rental.
We want to look at that, which we cannot do here.
We already said we can't.
The ordinance can.
Well, we got also have a special permit.
Okay. Because that's what this is going into. What do we have to have? Push towards the ordinance that.
Or if we have to have the owner present there, can't rent if he's not there.
Right, from a zoning perspective again, but uh, you're right. We're talking about a list of things that we want the town to address. You probably will want to address um, the issue of I own my house, it's just a house, there's no separate apartment or anything and, you know, I go off to visit my family on the West Coast every year for a month, and while I'm gone, I rented out as an Airbnb. Um, it's like, that's not something I encourage you to regulate via zoning, but it is something that the town should regulate via your code of ordinances. So there, there ought to be standards for that. We're just advocating that zoning is not the tool to address that kind of situation.
I agree.
And it's too cumbersome too. I mean.
That's right. I agree. It's not zoning.
It's not zoning at all. But that's a big hole in the zoning that we want to make sure this covers. We don't want to be covered by saying we don't care.
Right.
Yeah, point.
So again, I think it's perfectly valid to say, look, as a body, you've been receiving a lot of public input on this issue. Uh, and you've considered a lot of these issues and so you can, you know, develop as a group, your recommendations to town council, or that we've, we've done everything we think we can within our jurisdiction. And based on what we've heard, you need to pick up the ball and run with these other things.
That's a good approach.
I think maybe it's something that you, you guys could do is kind of an evaluation. By devil's advocate, say we put all these things together. And what's there's a whole, a lot of people out there. Mostly who, what they tried to figure out is what they can get away with. Sometimes to figure out what you do, others, what can I get away with? And so I just need you guys to take a look at, what's the worst that can happen? With these. Is there some big gap that we're not thinking up between what we're doing and what we're doing? That might make it from all, from all the testifying that we've heard, the problems that are happening. When we put these boots in effect and someone who's really looking to what they can get away with, will still do it. I don't know what that is right now, sitting here bringing it together.
It may be uh, wise if we were to ask the zoning enforcement official to sit down with us and sort of give his take on what's the easiest way for him to do this job because I'd hate to do all this stuff and have him think that we've made his job more difficult. And maybe there's some things that we could do easily that would make his job easier. It might be a terrific resource. He's the one who's gonna have, doing this stuff.
So if we can do that, this is Kevin, I think that's appropriate because even one of my responses where I took a caveat, the caveat essentially said, if this is enforceable, if we don't have the workforce to enforce what we come up, including an ordinance, then the possibility is, is that we need to ban S T Rs, if that's what our thought is. So I'd love to hear, and I don't know Deb, how you feel about that, but I'd love to hear um, what his thoughts were on this.
So I think that's, that's a great idea. What's, guys have, that we're almost there.
Yeah.
Idea of what, what you think you're going to be proposing.
Yeah.
Um, to have the code enforcement officer come and, as well as the zoning enforcement officer and then kind of talk through what the process is of enforcing and where they see these goals or where they see improvement.
Maybe there's things that we can do that would make their job really easy or less difficult.
If they come back, the administrative thing, when they come back and say, this is going to add twenty hours of work a week to our jobs unless to have a person. And we need to hire half a person. And that, that's what I'm saying, and you should come out of fees.
But I don't think there's a lot of experience, is there, in enforcing? That's why I keep hearing enforcement, all cited things hasn't been very strong.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It may be good to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, I bet they have a few thoughts because of knowing, right?
I, I think the thing about what we're trying to do, hopefully a whole lot less enforcement.
Yeah, they're not, you're gonna have to have registration and these and licensing. And there is some of that already in place because they don't, they have to have tax. Because of taxes.
I don't think so.
And that mostly people said, if they, when they register, it's fifty percent hotel tax.
I'm talking about people haven't registered. There's so many that haven't registered.
Well, you're always gonna find a few that are in the.
Maybe a lot.
I'm sure there's a lot of ten ninety-nine.
All right. Well, this is good. I don't think we've solved all of our questions and problems, but I have enough to go on to do a second draft of the short term rental ordinance language. One question for you all before we close, um, would it be helpful for us to develop a questionnaire for uh, data centers and cannabis? As we. As we did for short-term rentals and ask you to fill that out in advance of our? Next meeting, I think we're very, very close on cannabis, I have one major question, I just wanna make sure you're all comfortable with? Uh, data centers, I know is? New, we haven't had a chance to discuss that first draft yet. But, uh? If you liked? This questionnaire format, uh, let me know and we can? We can do that for those two topics as well, and hopefully that will be more efficient.
You think they'll have controversy on data centers?
I don't think so, um, I mean, not controversy, but there may be things you disagree with.
Minor details.
Okay, so you, you all felt generally comfortable with that first draft?
Same with camp, yes. Cannabis, I don't know if there's a lot of distinction there.
We're pretty far along.
Yeah, it seems like cannabis might be something, but I think we've already had a lot of it, but I don't know, you know, for me, it was really helpful to see? The other responses and then, and, and I hope it was helpful to you, Jeff.
Oh, very much so.
I mean, it's sort of like puts everything on the table.
Yep.
It creates, it creates a framework for our decision, right?
Absolutely.
Essentially, we, we have a, a collaborative template that allows us to get down to the language that we want. So? I, I have to say, Jeff, to answer the question, I think cannabis, I think we're almost there. But I wouldn't mind the template as far as practice data centers. Because, um, I think it'd be great to lay that out in some ways, because I think there are stronger people than myself on zoning. But I, I think I have some really strong thoughts? On the practice of it, so? I'd love to see that on data centers, because I think it completes the process.
Well, maybe you just fill out the questionnaire, Kevin.
Jeff, have I sent you the zoning practice from the American Planning Association from June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, do you know?
From June twenty-twenty-two? Uh, yeah, I think, I, I think I sent that to you.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Essentially, I mean, it pretty much lays it out for us, what, what do we wanna choose there? Especially on page six or whatever, but, um, I think it's five. I think that's the basis, so maybe we use that for the basis and then, um? You know, run the question off of that, particularly page five, because that was really good, Jeff.
Great, yeah, if others, if I was to find that useful, again, if you feel like I'm comfortable with this? Uh, I, I don't feel like answering this, then that's fine, you don't have to answer it, but for those of you who? Feel strongly, you can, you can answer the questionnaire and, uh, I'd be happy to get your info, information that way.
My only thought is that it might be difficult for you to form questions when we really have had very limited? Conversation about it yet, but you know, you could probably talk with some questions. Yeah, I'm still, I'm, I'm still trying to grasp? The whole thing, so maybe that's a place to start, but it's up to other people.
I mean, basically, in, in the, in the draft, we have our standard gray boxes, which often pose questions, policy questions. So? All I would really plan to do would be to pull out? Those policy questions from the gray boxes, but just put them aside into a questionnaire format? That you can? Respond to, because I mean, I already have in my head what questions I have for you, and those are reflected in the gray boxes. Uh, so it would just be a matter of? Putting those in a questionnaire format.
Some of the things maybe we need to understand? What goes on, noise? What does it really mean? The limits? You know, are they realistic? Water, what are we using water for? Where does it go?
I'm stuck on this net, zero carbon.
And zero carbon isn't realistic, unless we wanna just apply it to? You know, the backup generators.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I mean, something the size of what they were proposing, I think I asked you, Kevin, if this was even feasible to? Make it green and you said probably not in today's technology? So we essentially eliminated.
It's not, yeah, but it? It's green for this town, it's wherever the power is generated, or it's not green.
Right, but we're on the cusp of it, we're on the cusp of it, and my point is, rather than decide just on today's? Is think of the vision for the town and ensure that where the puck is going, which is green? That that's what we planned for, so? You know, I just may modify that, I will say, um, next week, I'm going to a seminar? That includes the development of, of, of green data centers, that I personally may have more information and I will forward it? To the commission at that.
Right.
And I will say just one, one quick thing there. We were very aggressive proposing the net zero, because what I heard, the instructions I heard from you the last time we discussed this was? Yeah, let's be really aggressive about? Uh, green standards, even if? They are standards that can't quite be met today. So that's, that's why we were as aggressive as we were with, with that. Yeah, I did, I did, yeah, I thought I did what you told me to. Anyway, yes, all those things, uh, are obviously the things we need to, the policy decisions that we need to talk through.
Have a timeline. Like our generation's changing? By the day, how we do it? Transmission's a different story. But? Right, if our target is net zero, fine, it doesn't mean it? Building or whatever it is, can't be? Put in a position where it can become net zero, net zero isn't fixed. Generation is one of those things, we can make it perfectly efficient, make it more efficient as you go along. Say, fine, we're at fifty percent or seventy-five percent? When you build it? And in another ten years, it must be net zero, because it becomes something that's more possible. I would say I can't do it now, so I can't ever do it.
I will, I will go ahead and prepare that questionnaire, and the questionnaire will include, as this one did? You know, do you have? Any questions about my questions or, uh, any issues? You want me to be, come to the table prepared? To answer. Really, I object to this question, I think it's written terribly, uh, let me know.
I, I think, yeah, I, I would be comfortable so long as it's sort of understood that this is like? The beginning of the thought process? Because for me, it's not only how these things, uh? Operate, but? Where you can, what's? Districts you can actually practically put them in? And where they belong in Groton. So that's also part of it for me too, is, you know, you gotta look at the map? And pick the spot, you know, pick the, because if you need a lot of space, however many acres it is? There's a limited number of spaces that we have available, and this is? District wide, so you're not just looking at possibly one, it could be, you know, once you allow a use, then it's? Allowed in that district. Anyway, that's Mike, that's? You know, part of this thinking process that I'm sort of? Doing.
So when will we have the questionnaire for the? Data center?
I can pull that together this week, that's no problem at all.
Well, good. Yeah, the faster we get, earlier we get them, then we can have time to turn them around. Get them back? So they can be collated together. And we gotta think about our next meeting, special meetings. We gotta just do data centers and cannabis. Start with those? Next time. Anyone have anything else? Bring up? I'll make a movement for Germany, one second.
That's where it started.